I think we can get started. Quickly, I want to remind everyone that we do have cards and pens in the back if anyone does have a question. All of the questions we'll be asking the candidates do come from the audience. So if you have a question you'd like to ask, find a card, write your question, and then give it to one of our volunteers and they will bring it up here. So, to begin, again, thank you everyone for joining us. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization that encourages informed and active participation in government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. Thanks to the candidates, the Morehead Library and Morehead Community Access Media, who will record and make the forums available online. And then, thank you also to our volunteers for assisting with this forum. For this forum, each candidate will have one minute for an opening statement, one minute for each answer, and one minute for their closing statement. We have a timer, Carol, sitting in the front row, and she will have signs for 30 seconds and a stop sign as well. And again, this is a forum and it's not a town hall session, therefore, I will be reading all of the questions. Again, the note cards and the questions come directly from the audience. And the questions must be written so that all candidates answer every question. So if they're directed towards a specific candidate, they will need to be rephrased to be broader for every candidate. With that, we are going to start with Shelley Carlson is not able to be here today, but she does have a statement she has provided, and that is something we do offer for all candidates who are not able to attend the forums, is to provide a short statement. And I believe that will be a video statement. So we will start with that prior to the opening statements.
Greetings, everyone. My name is Shelley Carlson and I'm running for Morehead City Council Ward Two. I wish I was able to attend today's candidate forum, but I had a previous commitment in Florida presenting at a conference on financial exploitation to elders. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters of the Red River Valley for hosting today's candidate forum and allowing me to provide information about myself and my candidacy. I'm running for Morehead City Council because I have a strong commitment to public service. I have provided public service for the last 24 years, starting as a paralegal with the Morehead City Prosecutor's Office and currently serving as the Criminal Justice Systems Manager with the Minnesota Elder Justice Center. I believe the skills that I have developed in my professional career will translate well into being a Morehead City Council member. For 16 years, I provided direct service to victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, homicide, and other crimes through my work in nonprofit and governmental organizations. The last eight years, I have focused on coordinating projects, providing trainings, and building community collaboration between a multitude of governmental organizations, nonprofit agencies, and also private businesses. I believe my skills working directly with the public in addition to my experience building community collaboration will make me successful as your city council representative. My priorities on city council would be to continue the forward momentum currently being done in downtown Morehead while simultaneously focusing on other areas of Morehead that also need attention, for example, the area around Family Fair in South Morehead. I also fully support funding the Morehead Police Department and determining ways to retain our officers in the city. Additionally, I support the Morehead Fire Department in their quest to determine how best to respond to calls for service, which may require building a new south side fire station. MavsLA's hierarchy of needs places safety as one of the basic needs for individuals. We must ensure a safe community in order to attract new homeowners and businesses to Morehead, which is why we must make certain our fire and police departments are fully staffed and their agencies have the tools they need to respond to emergencies in a timely manner. Lastly, I would continue to prioritize ways to determine how to build healthy neighborhoods within our city. I have lived in Morehead for over 20 years and graduated from MSUM with a paralegal degree and a master's in public administration. My husband of 21 years is Ron Carlson, who is originally from Morehead. We have two children, McKinnon, age 19, and Jordan, age 16. McKinnon attends school at NDSU and is in the Air National Guard. Jordan is a junior at Morehead High School and is a Level Nine American Gold gymnastics. Thank you for your time, and I would like to ask for your vote on November 6th.
Perfect. And with that, we will start with our opening statements, and we're going to start on the side of the room and work our way that way, starting with different candidates for the following questions. So, for the opening statements, Riley Monham.
I can start?
When you're visible.
When everyone can see me. All right. Hello, everyone. My name is...
Oh, yes, we will be sharing microphones, so make sure you speak directly into it.
Hello, everyone. My name is Riley Monham. I've been a Morehead resident for five and a half years now. I live with my wife, Brandy. She's a nurse at Sanford, and we have a one-year-old daughter named Ridley. I work for Minnesota Farm Bureau. I work on the policy development and leadership development side of things. We work closely with our state legislators. I have a very good relationship with our state legislators in this area, and we work on policy that affects rural Minnesota. So that can be a number of things: transportation, funding, things that affect taxes, that sort of thing. So, that's a little background about myself. Three of the things that have got me interested in this is permanent flood protection, working on property taxes, and that means bringing in businesses so that we can broaden our business and people that input into taxes, and then also providing support and leadership on 11th Street Underpass. Ultimately, what I'd like to do with the Morehead City Council is bring a perspective that puts Morehead first and leave my personal and political agenda at home, and I would look forward to serving for the people of Morehead.
Thank you. Shelley Dulquist, your opening statement.
I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this tonight, and I'm glad that all you attended. It was a big turnout. I'm really happy to see that. I'm running for city council to represent Ward One. Ward One is such a diverse and interesting slice of Morehead. People in Ward One live in trailer courts, retirement homes, historic houses, and new developments. Ward One is home to a wide variety of businesses. It also has Churches United for the Homeless, and we have the best Dairy Queen on the planet Earth. We also have Oakport, the newest addition to our city, and I'm lucky to have lived in Ward One my whole life. I grew up by Matson Field, graduating from Morehead High and completing a bachelor's degree at Minnesota State University in Morehead. I have been meeting with my Morehead neighbors, hearing many different points of view, and finding a number of places where we all come together. Although people who love a town and want the best for it are going to disagree about the best way forward, the people in Ward One see a number of things in the same way. City assessment process can be improved. Police, firefighter, and other city employee benefits need to be competitive to attract the best professionals. Plot holes have to be fixed, and did I mention we have the best Dairy Queen on the planet Earth?
Thank you. Drew Sandberg.
Hello, my name is Drew Sandberg. I've been a Morehead resident for approaching three years now. I'm married to my wife, Terri Trickle, who is the love of my life. We have three kids. Sorry, I gotta refer to my notes here, so... We do have three kids. Claire's 18, Scott's 16, and Greta's 10. As I mentioned, I have relatively new, fresh face to Morehead, but it isn't because I didn't want to be here. After high school, graduated from Perm High School in 1990, joined the Air Force, served honorably for nearly 10 years, and then went on to a role supporting Air Mobility Command's global mission as a data analyst. Currently work as a data analyst again for in the ag and precision ag industry. Enjoy my work very much, and truly like to thank everybody for attendance and the invitation to be here tonight.
Thank you. Deb White, your opening statement.
Thank you for this opportunity. So, I moved here 18 years ago before I even looked on the map, or without looking on the map to see where Morehead was. And I came out for an interview. I was finishing my PhD in Albany, New York, and decided to come out here, and I thought this will be a good practice job interview. Interviewed at Minnesota State University, Morehead, by the time I left, I called my husband and said, "This is where we need to raise our family." And I've never doubted that from the moment I decided. And so, we sold our business that we had in upstate New York, a regional coffee business, and moved out here. I was fortunate to have many opportunities. I started a regional public leadership program for women in my second year here. We've had over 600 women from the region go on to create positive change in their community, forming nonprofit organizations, and taking on great projects to help members of our community. I've served on the Morehead Planning Commission, where I got a good sense of planning and development issues. And one of the other things I'm proud with is I've worked very actively in my neighborhood. So I'm a founding member of the historic Comstock neighborhood and really worked at bringing people together, different stakeholders, residents and citizens, or citizens and investors, so that we can make good decisions for Morehead. Thank you.
Thank you. Troy Krabenhoff.
Oh, we're stuck. Don't start the time. Oh, I knew that was happening. Knew it. All right, I want to do a video if I can. Is I gonna come back? I gotta, I'm not here. My name is Troy Krabenhoff. I lived in my ward pretty much my whole life. 50 years old now, born and raised in my ward. Actually, had a paper route in my ward for eight years, believe it or not. Joined the military. I was 25 years in the Air Force and retired honorably. Glad you brought that up. I was a police officer on the civilian side. I was a firefighter on the military side. I was a paramedic for quite a while, working both volunteer and paid in some places. Right now, I have a small business. I got a real estate company in Morehead. I got two little monsters that are in the Morehead school system that love dearly. Some are playing football now, and, you know, I want to run for city council. I want to try to help the community out. I have no axe to grind. I have no agenda that I'm bringing to the table. I'm very proud of Morehead and everything it's accomplished and where it's going. I just hope to be part of that and help it grow more as we go on.
Thank you. Carl Delkey.
I'm Carl Delkey. I'm a semi-retired business person. I've been in Morehead and Clay County all of my life. I've been in business all of my life. I've been in a number of businesses, both in the city and in the county. I've been married to my wife for 43 years. We have four grown children and eight grandchildren, and we're soon going to have a great-grandchild. I've been in business my whole life. My wife also is in business. She still has a business in Morehead. That is my primary reason for running. I believe that because of my business experience, I will be able to facilitate a lot of business transactions and stuff within the city of Morehead. You're looking at me funny. I believe that's all for right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Hedlund, your opening statement.
Hi, everybody. I'm Mark Hedlund. I was born and raised in Roseau, Minnesota. I've lived in Morehead now for just over 15 years. I am an associate broker with Hatch Realty in Fargo. I have two beautiful daughters that are in the Morehead school system, Annabelle, who will be 11 here in about a month, and Ivy, who just turned six. I am very active in certain volunteer work with things called the F5 Project that helps people transitioning out of our jail system into getting a better step ahead and back into their life with helping them find jobs and housing. And some of the things that I want to focus on is to continue the momentum that our economic development has, bringing new businesses into town as well as supporting the current businesses that are here. Morehead is a beautiful community. Morehead residents, I feel, are very loyal, and I think we all want to see a little bit more business in town so we can travel less across the river for things that we need. Thank you.
Thank you. Chuck Hendrickson, your opening statement.
Thank you, and can you hear me? Good, okay. Thank you. Good evening. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this candidate forum. My name is Chuck Hendrickson, and I've lived in Morehead for 15 years and have been a member of the Morehead City Council for about five years. And when I say I'm originally from Morehead, Mark's from Roseau, so... I attended Concordia College, majoring in political science and English training, and earned an MBA from the University of Mary. I'm married to my wife Renee for 24 years, who is also from Roseau. I have four children, Hannah, who is sophomore at McAllister, Marty, who is a freshman at the University of Wisconsin-Milwaukee, Maxwell, who is nine, and Gavin, who is five. So I got basically two families there. I'm currently a program manager for Razor Consulting Solutions, and that is a vendor of Microsoft. A few boards I currently serve on include the Economic Development Authority, the Metro Flood Divergent Authority, Clay County Solid Waste Advisory Committee, and the Morehead Public Service Commission as a liaison. I want to thank you all for coming tonight, and my main focus right now is the infrastructure and economic development for the city of Morehead. Thanks.
Thank you. And for our first question, we will start with Shelley Dulquist. And for that, I'm going to take a pretty popular topic that we've been getting in questions and kind of combine it, and that is the topic of business and specifically to downtown Morehead. Just so you're aware, some of the questions are dealing with empty retail space, some of the questions are dealing with the competition with Fargo, but I'm going to simplify it and make the question, "What direction would you take to improve our downtown?"
We have had some successful businesses in Morehead that left, and it wasn't because they weren't attended by people in Morehead. It's because the chain, like Herberger's, was a very successful business in Morehead. Also Bennigan's, which is now Boulder Tap House, was successful, but because of the chain, it left. I think we have a great company. In Ward One, we have all the downtown. Junkyard Brewery has become very successful. They have expanded. The Old Lutheran, also very successful. So that we have successful businesses, and we know that it can be done. We're just going to have to figure out what it is that we would be successful. We have a lot of students in town who love to go to these kinds of things. And I would love to see things like downtown Fargo and Morehead also. And we are seeing, there's a yarn shop, there's Rustica. We have successful businesses, and I think we have room for more.
Thank you. Drew.
Actually, I have two particular issues that I'd like, or two approaches I'd like to take with the downtown redevelopment. First and foremost, I'd like to increase the resources and expand the role of the Economic Development Authority. In my current assessment, I think it is understaffed and under-resourced. I'd like to be able to change or influence the direction of that to actually have them actively recruiting and developing new businesses in town. And that actually means a business incubator, working on developing startups so that they can potentially grow here in Morehead and continue to grow with us. And then the second is, I think it's time to have a conversation about bold actions about the Center Avenue corridor. That could take a number of different directions, and I have some strong opinions about that, have some ideas, but again, it isn't just one person. It's a broader conversation with the community and with the rest of the members of the council. But again, bold action on Center Avenue.
Thank you. And Deb, what direction would you take to improve our downtown?
I think it's a really exciting time for downtown Morehead because we're at the cusp of some big changes. So if you see the things that are happening, things like the Simons Warehouse Project and places like Junkyard that are really, you know, thriving places in Morehead and really exciting changes, and then some of the things that we've been doing to build and prove upon things that will bring in companies and bring in businesses. So things like the new, creating new Renaissance Zones is something that the city just recently did. They reevaluated their incentives that they're providing for businesses in downtown and spent some time talking with business owners to see what would work well. And I think as we work to expand on that, one of the things that we could benefit from is doing more strategic planning about overall, what do we need for downtown? So for instance, one of the issues is we've seen things like the biggest growth area in terms of residential permits is in multifamily mixed use, and so more people are moving to downtown Morehead. So what kind of things are they looking for? These are people that want to be able to walk to a coffee shop, walk to a restaurant. So how can we work on planning to make sure that we slow down traffic? So we've looked at that in some of the areas of downtown, that we have a walkable urban environment where people can do and have the kind of life that they want, and then the businesses will come to serve those people in downtown Morehead.
Thank you. And Troy.
I dare to touch this thing like it electrocuted. Yank! So, you know, I really like what the city is doing. We've been to a couple meetings collectively as a group and seeing the development that's happening. So some really exciting things are happening. I have, as a real estate agent, sat down with some developers and just asked them, you know, why a business is in Fargo and why we didn't try it in Morehead. And also sat down with some to see if they would consider developing, but they're kind of like, "Who are you? I'm not, you know, of any position of power or anything." But where the city is going, I just want to expand on that and try to help out and see if we can get some of the buildings that are looking a little tired, try to keep the historical value of them if we can, and try to get some other businesses that come in. And, you know, we do got to embrace that we're a college town and get people to want to stick around and stay here instead of cross the river to do their entertainment, their shopping, their, you know, pretty much everything. So hopefully, we can keep the kids in Morehead and stay here and, you know, create their own family and everything here.
Thank you. Carl.
I'm a little bit of an old timer, so I remember what downtown Morehead was at one time. Now, that was a long time ago, and we can't go there because the world has changed. But I'm very excited right now about what's happening in downtown Morehead. We have a new Economic Development Director. I think he's a fantastic guy. He's got some great ideas. He's young and energetic, and I think we need to work with him. I think also, we need to create more incentives for business, particularly small businesses. A lot of the incentives we have are designed for larger businesses and rehabilitations. I believe we need to develop something for small business people to help them get started. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark.
I guess the first thing I'd like to see is Deb to open her coffee shop again that she, in downtown Morehead, because I don't think I've ever seen a coffee shop that isn't busy. But, you know, I think we're on the right path with what we're doing with downtown, and it's obviously going to take a little bit of time to get the buildings and things done, but once we start to see it, we'll start to see more people want to come over. I've, in the real estate that I've worked with, I've spoken with a few business owners in Fargo and asked them, you know, "Why don't you have a place open in Fargo, or, excuse me, in Morehead?" And they said, "Well, we've looked at it. We just can't make the numbers work." And so, it would be, you know, I like what Drew had to say about creating like a startup for people to get over here, but finding out what it is that we can do with these, those new business owners that will make those numbers work for them and bring in the amenities that people need. We are a college town, and college kids do spend money, and they want to be able to be around things that, within walking distance, that they can, they can get everything they need. So, I, like I said, I think we're in the right path, and what we're doing now is great, and I'm excited to be a part of growing it, so...
Thank you. And Chuck, what direction would you take to improve our downtown?
And thank you for that question. Like was mentioned before, we do have Renaissance Zones that were just passed by the city council, and I think that's going to be remarkable. It simplifies the process of incentives, so if businesses do want to relocate here, the Renaissance Zone incentives makes it that much easier. Second thing, we did contract with Downtown Morehead Incorporated with our, and so we do have a new EDA, head of the EDA, Derek LaPointe, and he's got great vision, and I think he's going to lead Morehead downtown into the promised land, so to speak. But the main thing I want to talk about is it's a one-stop shop for businesses. We need to set up where if somebody wants to relocate to Morehead, you have a one-stop shop, or they have a checklist, they can go through all the things they need to do before a person can set up a business. Right now, they're just kind of scattered everywhere and don't really have a direction of what to do. So if we had like a checklist, like a one-stop shop with the city of Morehead, I think it'd make it easier for relocation, but I do think we are on the right path with the passage of the Renaissance Zones and Derek LaPointe as our new EDA director and the one-stop shop. So thanks.
Thank you. And Riley.
Currently, I think there are a lot of good things going on in Morehead. Like I said, we moved here five and a half years ago, me and my wife, and I've seen a lot of changes in those last five and a half years. So I would continue to work with the Economic Development Department to continue the push forward that they've gotten started. I'm not against tax incentives. I think that they can be utilized to bring new businesses into town. The one thing I would want to make sure is that we do not make our current businesses uncompetitive with those, but I would definitely utilize tax incentives to get new businesses in town. Also, I'd like to utilize my relationship with our state legislators, Representative Ben Lean and Senator Kent Eakin, to make sure that we're not getting unfunded mandates sent here from St. Paul. What they want to do in St. Paul and the Twin Cities isn't necessarily always good for us, and that stuff costs our city money. We're a university town, like was already said, so we need to make sure that we have jobs that keep our students in Morehead and keep their ideas in Morehead. And then thirdly, or not thirdly, about fifthly, whatever you want to say, there's some ag land in Morehead that has specials that's connected to it, and I'd like to look at that and see what we can do to start the development on that land.
Thank you. And our next question, we will start with Drew, and that is, "What do you believe are the top three challenges Morehead faces in the next two to four years?"
I'm going to go back, I'm going to go back to this strategic plan that I've kind of mapped out for myself, and I think the first challenge is attracting people who want to be here. In my opinion, we could do more to have some community events that would attract people to come here to spend money. As we've all mentioned, it's the issue about business, the lack of a commercial and industrial tax base. Certainly would want to focus there. And then I also believe there isn't enough in terms of amenities for families, indoor-outdoor recreation. I think that's quality-of-life type of issues that we can work on focusing, supporting families that will be here. Thank you.
Thank you. And Deb.
I think the three things that, the three things that I would go back to, one is this issue of strategic planning, that we are at this crucial point where we're seeing these pockets of growth, but we need to tie it all together. We need to work at having a plan and really thinking about what kind of a Morehead do we want? You know, what do we value? What do we, as a community, want to see in our city? And so, having that conversation, then we can really start to decide how we want downtown Morehead to develop and what we want to do with some of the areas where clearly the economy is changing, and there's certain things that are not going to come back. How can we address those? But thinking about our identity. Secondly, is really working with the state. So one of the big issues is, again, we need to be making our case of why, why we need certain things. So things like, you know, looking at the diversion, looking at LGA, local government aid, has been pretty much stagnant for a number of years. Making sure that we have good border city legislation that continues to not just be extended, but will grow so that we can meet our specific needs that we have as being a border city. And those are only two, but two important things that I would focus on.
Thank you. And Troy.
Well, I hate to bring up a horrible subject, but I'm still a little worried about the flood control and the diversion. Hopefully, that is going to go through. You know, they have the Plan B, which is great, and Addition C that's coming out now that they're looking at. I just really want to be very proactive on that because the alternative is having another, you know, Grand Forks incident, or a Minot, or a Bismarck incident. So I'm hoping to keep the pressure on that, to keep that going through. Getting a little worried about the law enforcement. There's, you know, they're down seven people. One guy just went to the county, so I think they're going to be a little short. Takes a little while to train these guys up and get them in there, so I think they need a little help, maybe resources their way. And, you know, I'm a little worried about the expansion and not getting maybe another fire station set up if that is needed in the near future, or at least have it set so it's there. So we do get our services when we need them, you know, if the need arises.
Thank you. And Carl, the top challenges that Morehead is going to face?
I think one big thing we need to do is we need to promote our city. We need to spread the information that we've got a fantastic place to do business. We need more business, but we've got the place. We've got lots of spaces. Secondly, we need to work on and get in the work, the 11th Street Underpass. That is, that is a must for us. With our, with our train problems that we have, we need a way to move from one side of the city to the other. And it's, I just believe it's... the other. And it's, I just believe it's very important. Thirdly, we do need to finish the, the flood project. If that project, flood project does not get finished, about 800 homes in Morehead will have to go back to flood insurance. So that's a huge thing for about 800 homes. It looks like it's happening, but we need to stand behind it.
Thank you. And Mark?
We talk a lot about the revitalization of downtown. One thing that I think we've all seen is we've lost three large businesses in Morehead in the last year with Sam's Club, Family Fair, and Herburgers. And a couple of those are on main thoroughfares that people see and people wonder what's going on, and I think it is a priority to try to get some bigger businesses in to fill those. Also to continue the, the spur of the housing growth that we're having. Morehead, I think averages, it's like 1.2 kids per house, so every house we put in the ground just increases our tax base. So continuing to grow our residential side of things like that. And, excuse me, sorry, our tax abatement that we have with those houses I think are great, and I think we need to promote it more. A lot of people, you know, always talk about their, the difference in income tax, but I don't think people understand the, the positives that come with living in Morehead. And I think getting the word out to people and getting people to understand that it's really not that bad. It's, it's not that, you know, there's a lot of us that live here, so. But getting that word out and getting people educated about what Morehead has to provide.
Thank you. And Chuck, the top challenges Morehead faces in the next two to four years?
Thank you for that question. The top three challenges what I see are infrastructure, and right now we're in dire need of a transfer station. The current transfer station on Highway 10 is about 43, 44 years old, and we're just making Band-Aid fixes to it right now. So that would be a top priority, in my opinion. Along with the 2021, make sure we have proper funding for the 2021 underpass and of course flood protection with the FM diversion. The second thing is attracting new businesses, especially filling those stores that have left, like Family Fair and Herburgers and Sam's Club. And the third thing I would challenge, the challenges would be affordable housing for college students and seniors that are, more housing for 55 plus. If we create more housing for people who are 55 years or older, the people from in the city will move to that housing, to the 55 plus housing, and then leave their Ramblers and what's in the inner city. And those, those families who haven't purchased a home before can move in those homes, so it would open up a brand new, affordable housing for young families. So, thanks.
Thank you. And Riley?
First thing I would want to work on is keeping our property taxes competitive with our neighboring communities. From, from all the people that I've visited with in Ward One, that's the number one concern that we have right now. Since I, since I moved here five and a half years ago, my property taxes have doubled. And so I'd like to sit here and tell you that we could cut back on spending, but I know better. The, the main way that we can at least maintain our property tax levels is to bring businesses and people into this town. So that's the number one thing that, that I'm going to work on and that we should be working on as a community. And if we're not going to stay competitive with our neighbors to the west, that's not going to work. So that's, that's one thing that we need to keep in mind. Number two would be getting permanent flood protection. I have to be honest, when I moved to this city five and a half years ago, I, I didn't know how I quite felt about the diversion. After doing my homework, the two governors have put together a task force, Plan B of that task force is the best for our state and for our community of Morehead. And so I support Plan B that they've brought forward. And then the third thing is to provide leadership on the 11th Street underpass. I, I get constant support when I talk to people for that in, in my area, and we need leadership on that, on that issue.
Thank you. The final answer for this question with Shelley, the top three challenges Morehead faces in the next two to four years?
I think planning, planning ahead. I bet we all wish we had an underpass or overpass years ago. I also think that the biggest thing, when I'm door knocking, the biggest complaint is potholes and fixing the streets. I know in Bennett Park, they still have gravel roads. They, and they need to be fixed, they need to be paved. I think most people in, in Ward One have just regular complaints about things like that. I, I haven't heard anyone complain about their taxes. Most, most people are happy to be in, in Ward One, in the whole city. Basically, it's a great place to live. And also I think communication, I, we've run into some problems where people don't, don't believe that they are, they're being told what's coming up. I know the city does try, but we've had some people say that they didn't know what was coming up, and I think we should work on communications between what's going on in the city and the people that live in Morehead.
Thank you. So for the next question, we are going to start with Deb, and this one is concerning library. So the question is, talk about the role of the public library in the community. How can library service grow or expand to better serve this community over the next five years?
Well, as a professor, you can guess I'm a fan of libraries. But, you know, I think about what got me interested in reading when I was little, and some of it was just having that place where I could sit in the library in a beanbag chair, because it was the 1970s, you know, and grab books off the shelves and just explore this whole world of exciting things through the library. And so I think first that, that, first and foremost, that way of introducing kids to the love of learning, to be passionate about reading. And so the more we can get kids in there. But also recognizing that our libraries serve important community services, that, you know, for many people, for instance, it may be their only access to a computer. So you think about how many things today are all online. So being able to apply for jobs, apply for different programs. So send a note to your aunt that lives in Virginia, things like that, that it's essential that we have those things for, for people who, who may not have those in their home. And, and I think also recognizing that the, you know, the, the way that libraries work have changed, and a lot of this is going online and really keeping up with that and creating new ways for people to access it, even if it's not in the physical space, but finding ways to get those resources through electronic sources.
Thank you. And Troy?
Well, having four associate degrees, two bachelor's degrees, and a master's degree, I spent a lot of time in the library. And one poster I have in my house is you can never take away one's education. And I appreciate everything about the library, but like Deb said, it is getting a lot more electronic. And I think updates and more conference rooms in these places and maybe a little bit bigger conference room to get more people in here. But we'll have to kind of keep up with technology to get the new resources in here that, you know, kids are actually starting to learn on and use in their schools. So I'm all for helping out anywhere we can if this ever left. I mean, we'd really be hurting. You just don't know what you got until it's gone.
Thank you. And Carl?
Well, I remember my times in the library when I was a young person, but things have changed a lot since then. But I think we should make an effort to bring our, try and bring our schoolchildren into the libraries more. I think in some cases, it's a forgotten institution. I think we should fund it so it gets the technology it needs, so it stays current with what's going on in the world today. And, you know, it's a wonderful place for, for children to come and learn, and we need to maintain that. It's important in, in every city, and it's in a, it's very important in our city. And there again, I think we need to facilitate whatever funding we need to keep the library as it is.
Thank you. And Mark?
I grew up in a small town that we had what was called a bookmobile, and that was probably one of our favorite days, was when the bookmobile pulled up in front of the school and you got to go outside and pick out your books. And I think that West Fargo, I believe, has its little red school bus or something to that nature. I saw it at Row Farms one time, where they pull it up to different events and kids can come in, in and check out books. And they're trying to make it the tri-city wide. So if a kid from West Fargo was in Morehead, he could check his book in and out in that bookmobile. And I think that's something that would definitely keep kids interactive with books. My kindergartner's favorite day as well is, is Library Day. And so there's a big, there's a big thing there that a lot of young kids like to do it, but I also believe that our library needs to be very tech savvy. Because as much as a lot of us parents don't want our kids in front of screens, it's inevitable that that's where they're getting a lot of their education. So having the library as one of the top resources for kids and college kids and adults alike to be able to go in and use the facilities, I think is very important to our community.
Thank you. And Chuck?
Could you repeat the question, please?
Yes. Talk about the role of the public library in the community. How can library service grow or expand to better serve this community over the next five years?
Couple things here. I think we can expand the technology. I mean, tech, with, with computer use and eBooks, I think we can expand that to where it would make it more attractive for people to come into the library. More events, I can, my kids are here right now running around. By the way, Gavin and Max behave. Have more events for kids like Lego Day, and I know they do have that, but just expand that. I like the idea of more conference rooms, more updates to, to the library itself, or even possibly looking at a new library. So kids can come and adults can come to, and just, you know, work and have fun and just enjoy it. So, but I am open to building a new library. I think that would really benefit, fit the city really well, so, thanks.
Thank you. And Riley?
So the, the organization that I work for, we do a lot of literacy programs that deal with trying to teach kids where our, our clothes and our, our food and our fiber and all that comes from. We actually have donated books to every school library and, and this library, actually, in Clay County. One of my, one of the things I thought going into that was that kids had moved on to kind of electronics, and, and I was very wrong about that. Every library that I was in pointed out that kids still read books and it's a very popular thing. So they, they do play a very important role within a community. I would, I would, the number one thing I would do is work with the library to figure out what they need. They're the experts in this area, and I know that I'm not. So I would listen to what they have to say. And then I would also work with our, our state legislatures to, to make sure that we have funding to, to keep the community resource, which is the library, here and, and make sure that it has the tools that people need when they do come here.
Thank you. Shelley?
I too remember coming to this library since I was a kid. I love this library. It kind of has that Frank Lloyd Wright feel to it. And I do remember it was Governor Ventura who had cut the funding, the state funding for the libraries. And, and so the libraries have been trying to, to, to work on just, on, on cut funding. It would be nice if the state could help fund more for the libraries. It's an important place for a lot of homeless people to come and use the computers so they can look for jobs, they can look for how to contact their families. It's great for kids that don't have a computer at home. It, it's a great place just to come and, and browse. I have a friend who can't see, and we have a collection of books on, on the CDs here, which she uses. It just feels such a big part of the community that I think we forget.
And the final answer on the question regarding the library, Drew?
My wife and I, we support free little libraries. We do have one in our front yard and we're very proud of it. It does draw quite a number of folks who come and pick up books. That's just a plug for the little libraries. Admittedly, until you asked the question, I hadn't thought a lot, a lot about what the future holds for libraries. But I mean, if you have to take a step back and, and I probably need to get on my Harley and drive a little bit and think about this question and come up with a better answer. But ultimately, what this really comes down to is this is an information and knowledge transfer area, right? This is an area for, to attract people within the community. I'd love for this to be part of a, a larger community center where people are coming not just to check out old newspapers or check out some other books, but be part of a vibrant community where people are coming to have coffee, have conversations, meet their friends, check their email if you, if you haven't, don't have it on your phone, right? So I guess I'd, I'd wrap up by saying, it's a great question. I don't know that I have a real solid, very specific answer, just that I would like to see it part of a larger community center.
Thank you. In our next question, we will be starting with Troy. And that is regarding the police department. And so the question is, we are losing police officers on a regular basis to better payer conditions elsewhere. We always have several openings. We need more officers than currently approved. What is the solution?
Well, I worked for a smaller city, so Morehead gets paid pretty well for what their officers start off at. So I'm not going to complain about that. I wish I was one of them, but, you know, it, it's very difficult to get in the Morehead side versus Fargo. Fargo, you just need a two-year degree in anything. You can go to skills and get hired. Minnesota's a little bit more strict on that. They have to go into a criminal justice-type career field for college and then do their skills and then they can get hired on. So it's a little bit longer process for the Morehead side. And, you know, it is kind of working out for Fargo. I hate to compare us to Fargo because that's not what I want to do. I want to be absolutely different. But if they can get in a lot easier on Fargo's side than Morehead's side, that's one thing that we might have to open our doors and, you know, open up our minds. But our guys are, are a little bit more geared up towards going into a criminal justice field than, than doing a, you know, a business administrative and all of a sudden saying, you know, I think I'm going to be a police officer. So, but it is working out for Fargo. We are kind of hurting, so I think we need to relax a little bit on how tough it is to get in there, you know, obviously keep all the other elements, you know, the background checks and all that in place, the psych. But I think we could, we might have to for just a little while.
Thank you. And Carl?
I'm not terribly concerned about the police department. They, we have the best-trained, best-educated policemen in the, in this whole area. We have a great program. We have great policemen. We are down seven officers, but they are working on that right now. And because of our stringent application, it takes longer to replace those officers. But they are in the process of doing it, and we are always below standard because we have policemen leave, we have policemen forced to retire. So we, we are never up to force. But where we're at right now, we're not in a bad place. We're in a good place and we have the best policemen in the whole area.
Thank you. And Mark?
I'll be honest, I, I can't say that I have the answer for it. I, I do support our, our police and fire departments. I have quite a few friends that are on our local police department. And I agree, I think they are well-trained. They're very professional. And it, it maybe if Troy's answer is right, where we, we loosen it up a little bit. I know in a lot of things that you learn typically more in the field than you do in the classroom when it comes to certain, certain positions. And I know that they have a very stringent process to get out into the field. So if that's something that will help alleviate bringing in more candidates to the police department, I think that, that would be great. But I believe it's, it's a question that needs to be answered with the department itself and find out what it is that they're, they feel that they're lacking or that they're missing, and see what we can do as a city to help support that.
Thank you. And Chuck?
I think, do you want to repeat the question? I'm sorry.
Yes. No, it's, it's good to repeat it in the middle, so it can be reminded. So the question or the statement from the, from the audience is, we are losing police officers on a regular basis to better payer conditions elsewhere. We always have several openings. We need more officers than currently approved. What's the solution?
Well, we, we did raise the pay for police officers and we did approve, I think it was four last year. So we do have openings. What I would like to do is just make it comparable for, I, we lose a lot of the police officers to the Twin Cities, just on it, because they pay more and less hours. We need to make our police officers, or recruit police officers, and we need to make the pay and the benefits comparable to the Twin Cities. We're not losing police officers to the Twin Cities. And granted, you're going to lose some, you know, because they want to move back home or move closer to their families. I think if we made it comparable to the Twin Cities and Fargo, I think we could attract new officers and I think we could, you know, make our recruiting efforts even more specified, like if we went to Alexandria or, you know, some of the city schools that, that train those police officers. So I, I would make it comparable to cities around Morehead and, and the Twin Cities, so we could keep them and just... so we could keep them and just give them the perks, the benefits and just make them happy. Because if they're happy, they're going to stay.
Thank you. And Riley?
At the orientation, we were actually given a chance to ask questions to our, our chief of police. And, and at one time, Morehead was a stepping stone for people to leave and go to other communities. He had told me since then, we've became competitive with our wages, certainly with Fargo and with Dilworth. And I asked him about our, the resources that they're given. And, and he said, you know, within the last several years here, they now have resources and the training to compete with some of the best police departments. So, you know, what I gathered out of that is, is this, this issue will probably start to fix itself, hopefully, now that we are competitive. But, but we also need to make sure that, that these positions that are open get funded and get filled so that we don't have this big of a gap where we have seven openings. You know, we can live with maybe one or two at a time, but we need to make sure that, that we don't get put in this position. So I think being competitive with our neighboring communities is the number one thing we can do to keep good, a good police force. Thank you.
Thank you. And Shelley?
I agree too. I would not want to lessen our, our standards. I think we need to have trained officers and I'm glad that we have the standards that we do have. We do have six to seven openings, which has caused the police officers that are on duty now to be overworked. And you know how hard it is to get time off. So that's, you know, fewer vacation days, they're overworked. And I, I am happy that they did increase their, their salaries. And it's, it's also true, we need to keep our, keep it competitive. This is a great place to work and I think a lot of people would like to live here. There's also fewer people going to school for the criminal justice degrees. And so that's not something we can do. But keeping their salaries up is going to help them pay off their student loans. So I'm all for keeping their, their salaries high.
Thank you. And Drew?
I would agree with the rest of the folks here on the staff is that we wouldn't want to lower standards. I do believe we have a, one of the best-trained, most professional police forces in this area. If we, as a community, believe that we want to continue that level of support and we want to continue that level of safety and security in this community, I think most people can do the back-of-the-napkin math. If we need more police officers, and one segue. In my door knocking, I have come across some folks in the county law enforcement. And it is their opinion, as they express it to me, that most of this, the loss of, and the transfer of folks in law enforcement here is really due to overwork. And it probably does behoove us to take a look at adding staff or at least adding funding, whether that comes with additional taxes or looking at efficiencies in other areas. It could be either way. But ultimately, I believe we want to continue those, that level of service.
Thank you. The final answer for the question on the police department, Deb?
I've had the privilege for the last 18 years to be part of the Department of Sociology and Criminal Justice. And we're one of two programs in our area that has a law enforcement program. So we're part of the Minnesota Police Officers Standards and Training Licensing Program. And so I've had the opportunity to work with so many different of our local law enforcement officers. And I agree that we need to make sure that we are competitive because we had been losing many, many of our new officers. They would come in, we invest a lot of time and effort in getting them prepared for their job and then they would get recruited to go in other areas. And so making sure that we're competitive, that we're paying them, that their workload is reasonable. But also looking at some of the bigger issues in our communities today about why many people are choosing to not go into law enforcement and why the profession is sort of seen in a negative light. And I can see some of the work that I've done that's worked on improving some of those issues. So for instance, I've worked with the Morehead Police on doing some assessments in neighborhoods. So for instance, we worked for three years in the Ramke Park neighborhood, looking at some of the community police efforts that they were having so that they could look at where were their tensions between residents and police and how could they work on improving that so that there was a, a better connection that people really felt like they were working together as more, as residents of Morehead with our local law enforcement. And so I think if we can do that and really work at making people see why this is an important profession and make it a valued profession and make sure that they have those skills. So, thank you.
Thank you. And looking at the time, it looks like we should get into our closing statements, which we will start with Carl. But there were several questions that we did not get to. One of them was dealing with the, the diversion and your feelings on that. And so if anyone would like to add a response to that into their closing statement, we could probably give you a few extra seconds just so we can get that in. But yes, and so closing statements, possibly touching on diversion. Let's start with Carl. Thank you.
I believe I made my comments on the diversion. I think it's, it's pretty much done, but we need to keep working on it until it is completely finished because it is very important to many homes in Morehead. I would like to be on the city council. I've been in Morehead. I've been in business my whole life. Business, I believe, is our top priority in Morehead. It's, it's, it's what we need more than anything else. It's, it's what the city is crying for. It's what people are crying for. I would, I will be a huge advocate for, for business. My background is in business. I feel I could be an asset to that position. I also, I have, I believe this position should be nonpartisan. I have accepted no monies from any organization. Everything I've raised has been just from family and friends. I, I guess in closing, I would say this, that if I'm elected, I will always do what is best for the city of Morehead.
Thank you. And Mark?
Excuse me. The diversion, yes, we need it. We need to be proactive with it. We need to get it taken care of before we are forced into it from a catastrophic event. I don't think we're ever going to make everybody happy. And I think the plans that we have going forward are, I think we've got it just about taken care of. I, Morehead is a great community. I've been a proud member of it now for over 15 years. I love living here. I love having my daughters raised here. I feel like we are on the cusp of the economic side of rolling into something really great. And I think we need to continue that path and, and continue to get businesses and amenities in here that the citizens of Morehead want and need so that we can show that we are a great complement to the city of Fargo. And our community's youth, we need to find reasons for them to stay when they graduate college. And they are a big player in us growing our business and our business side of this. And I believe that with the, the development of downtown and as that gets rolling and gets going, I think we're going to start to see more and more. And we just need to make sure that we have a city and a city council and a mayor that supports that and continues to drive for it. So, thank you for this time.
Thank you. And Chuck?
Thank you very much. Again, I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for this candidate forum. It's been great. The city memorial has come a long way in the past five years and I think we, as a community, can accomplish much, much more. We have momentum with the development of our downtown and are making great strides in economic development with our new Renaissance Zone. We are also simplifying the process for incentives throughout the city to grow our business community. With our infrastructure, we have begun to work on the 2021st underpass and are in the process of securing funding for a new transfer station. We have also started a plan for the 11th Street Underpass, which are all infrastructure projects. We have increased our recycling with single sort and I hope to add business recycling as well. It's saving our landfill, folks. Finally, we do need permanent flood protection and I will continue to work hard to make that happen. And I think the FM diversion is the proper way to control the flooding around Fargo-Morehead. We will have three, possibly four, new council members and a mayor of the city of Morehead. I think my experience will help keep the city moving forward. It's been an honor to serve the city of Morehead and the constituents of Fourth Ward. I want to continue serving the great citizens of this city and I want to be a voice for you. So thank you all for coming out tonight, especially when there's a certain football game on right now.
Thank you. And Riley?
Nobody say the score. I got it taped at home.
First off, I want to, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this. I think anything that brings more people out to vote and educates them is a good thing for everybody. The things that I would like to accomplish on city council, I want to continue to work towards permanent flood protection and that includes option B, which was put together by the two task force of the, of the governors. I still think that we have a little ways to go on that. It's, it's been left in the hands of, of our DNR and, and we'll see where that goes to. But we may need to pick that back up and continue to move it forward. Secondly, I'd like to, to provide support and leadership on the building of the 11th Street Underpass. I've heard nothing but positive things about trying to move that project forward. I want to continue with the economic development that we have on First Ave. We need to do that to bring more people and businesses into town. And what that will do is lower property taxes for all of the people that live in Morehead. And that is a concern in Ward One. Fourthly, I'd like to utilize my strong connections with local legislators. I'd like to try to get as much state funding as we can. That way, we can use resources that we bring out of Morehead in our community in Morehead. And I would also like to keep city spending at a respectable level. We do this, again, by promoting economic development. I also commit to the citizens of Morehead that I'm going to put Morehead first. I'm not going to come with a personal, personal or political agenda and I promise everyone that. Lastly, I want to preserve the unique way of life for people that live up in Oakport. They are now part of our community. And I grew up on a farm two hours south of here and I understand exactly what they want when I say preserve their rural way of life. Thank you.
Thank you. And Shelley?
When I'm, if I get the chance to represent Ward One on the city council, I, I want people to be able to count on me for, for these things. They can count on me to love Morehead, they can count on me to listen to their concerns, to learn from them, and then to carry through. I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight and especially League of Women Voters. And I'm happy to answer any more questions. If you, if you have any, you can message me. They're on, I'm on Facebook and also you can go to my webpage at votedalquist.com. And I forgot to say that I do have a husband and three children also. I didn't say that at the beginning. I'm very proud of all of them and thankful that they have helped me through this campaign.
Thank you. And Drew?
Just to touch on the diversion, I absolutely do support that. We must protect the economic engine that is the greater Fargo-Morehead, West Fargo area. If we do, if we were to suffer a catastrophic flood, the domino effect of that is, is far-reaching. And we don't, we don't want to go through that. My closing piece is here. Look, everybody here, I would say, is probably going to do an excellent job if you choose to elect them. Going to encourage you to think about that you're electing a team of people who are going to show up and go to work on your behalf. As a team member, no single person ever really gets to be able to affect the change by themselves. We're, we're here, and I think I speak on behalf of quite everybody here. We're here to be your voice. We're here to try to affect the changes that are going to move Morehead forward, not only for today, but for the next generation. And so that our kids and our grandkids can really enjoy this area too. One of our biggest tasks that we're going, that we will have here is to draw and attract and retain some of the brightest peoples here in this community to come and work on the big problems that we have in Morehead. And finally, the thing that I would say about myself, I come at this particular opportunity to serve this community and I intend to do it with independence, with transparency, integrity, and tenacity. Thank you.
Thank you. Deb?
One of the things that really defines my leadership style is I feel that we do better as a community when we involve many voices in decision-making and when people really feel like they have a voice in our community. And so one of the things I was most proud of when I served on the planning commission was actually something no, most people don't even know about anymore. And it was a three-story building. It was the first three-story residential building that we put in a residential area in Morehead in my, in my area. So just south of the Prairie Home Cemetery, so not the Red Door apartment building. The, just south of the Prairie Home Cemetery. And I was on planning commission and it came up before the board and I knew that this could be an issue. And I asked if we could table it. And I worked with Kristy Lyshevsky, the city planner, so that we could get the residents together and the developer. And we sat down and we really just talked about things. And people, you know, had, could share why they were concerned about preserving their neighborhood. And the resident or the developer could talk about their ideas. And we, we had a great conversation about things like how could you put, you know, what kind of material could you use so that it would match to some degree or fit in with the neighborhood? How could we position the building so it wouldn't be so intrusive and really, you know, shock the people that are living in that residential area? You know, how could we do something that everybody could have a voice in and be happy with? And so in the end, the project was approved after we had this discussion and there was never an issue with it afterwards. And again, most people don't even know about it. And it's that kind of thing, is bringing people together. And I've thought about that. I've already knocked on about 1,500 doors in my ward. And having that opportunity to just hear from our residents. And I was at a house the other day and the gentleman had lived there for 20 years. And he said, "I'm only the second person who's ever came, come to talk to him." And I thought, how important that is, that we find everything we can. We are here to serve you and we need to do everything we can to serve our residents of Morehead. Thank you.
Thank you. The final statement, Troy?
The flood diversion, I'll start with that. 1997, I actually lost my house in the flood and I don't want anybody else to have to go through that. It was horrible. And also, I, I do think FEMA's keeping a very close eye on this diversion. If we don't do it, then flood insurance is going to pop up for several houses and it's going to make it unaffordable for these homeowners to be in these houses. So that, that does scare me, especially I was selling real estate. When you have flood insurance, it certainly is a deterrent to, to, to get into that property. So. I've been born and raised in Morehead, you know, graduated from high school here in 87, went to college here. Love the area. Like I said before, I really have no axe to grind. I have no secret agenda, nothing. I really want to help my community. And I've been a part of Morehead my whole life, so I just want to see where I can fit in and see where I can start helping and get more involved. I've been so fortunate to be able to be in this position, to be knocking on doors and saying who I am and talking to people and getting all their questions. I, I think everybody should go door to door and, and just meet these people because they're so interesting. And, you know, a lot have some pretty big opinions that, you know, I wasn't on the council before anything, so I don't know about a lot of the stuff. But I, I just think it's very fortunate that we had this opportunity to be able to do that and meet our residents, meet our neighbors, maybe get some signs out in their front yard. But I'm, I gotta stop. So I'm going to stop. Thanks for this opportunity to do some public speaking. What a, what a blast. But thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And thank you, candidates, and thank you, everyone, for being here. Before you go, I do have an announcement from the Morehead City Clerk's Office, who has a table right in the back, so stop there on the way out. But there's a need for election judges in Morehead at the November 6th general election. There are 15 polling places and a full complement of eight or nine judges at each location. Morehead needs at least 21 more people willing to serve as election judges. Voting at the local precinct is the first and most important step in our democratic process and election judges play a pivotal role in this important endeavor. And so I think with the crowd here, we could get quite a few election judges if you just stop at the back table. Or if you're viewing this later, you can go to the city of Morehead's website. Also, join us back here on October 4th for the State Rep for Districts 4A and 4B Forum, followed by the Clay County Commission District 3 and 4 Forum. And then again, on October 11th for the Morehead School Board Forum. And thank you all for being here.